The first one is RDJD Enterprise. Ninety-three fifty-nine North Door Highway, asking for a special land use for Marijuana Provisioning Center. And the Plan Commission passed, the motion was passed. So I'll make the motion as we go on the recommendation from the Plan Commission to pass this provisioning center.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and second that motion.
I'll second the motion then.
That's for ninety-three fifty-nine North Door, right?
Yes. As you know, I serve in the Plan Commission, if anybody has any questions, I'd be thrilled if you had an answer for me.
I believe that was the vacant building next to the lot sale.
That is correct.
Okay. Is there any questions on that?
Medical or...
What does that entail of processing?
They're just doing a little remodeling on the inside of the building.
These are...
These are head of provision.
Marijuana provisions.
Mr. Chairman, I just heard some board members uttering some questions and that brought to my own attention the wording on this. I mean, that was for, I mean, I have to go back and check, but I want to make sure that that was for a medical Marijuana Provisioning Center. And I think at this point in the venture, we have to be very cautious because you just opted out of rec. So now we've got to double check to make sure that the wording on that is correctly because if we don't, that's a big deal. The word "medical" in front of marijuana is a big deal, folks.
We've got two minutes to...
Okay, should I be right there? Okay, well, let's double check those. I'm just saying, bringing all those attention to it, let's double check that. It just says Marijuana Provisioning Center, does not say "medical."
The motion will read for medical Marijuana Provisioning Center, and it's not...
Yeah, the motion will read for medical. And make sure we cite the MMFLA because the MMFLA and the MRTMA are two different things. There are two acronyms referring to the two different laws. All right?
Is that what I'm concerned here now, is that what you asked for though in the finding commission? You're changing the verbiage right now based on just your recollection, recollection, recollection. From what I'm seeing, so I have a little, I'm a little hesitant to vote on something about your recollection.
Right, and I would be too, except our attorney Gilder did make the statement that under "medical," we have the right. And I'll let Mr. Gilder answer some board questions to make clear what I'm trying to say. But basically, we have an ordinance under "medical," and we have a description of "medical" at this moment. So if, and we have control over that.
Correct.
Okay, and since this board opted out of rec temporarily, I think at the current moment, we should state the word "medical" under the MMFLA, not...
Well, that's why I wouldn't want to include recreational.
Well, I mean, look, even if the Plan Commission did approve them for a Marijuana Provisioning Center and maybe that little tidbit of information just left out.
They should have...
You believe in KIMO?
I don't believe in KIMO.
I don't believe in KIMO either. Is it, you know? Yeah, I think we include it in the motion that we prove it for "medical" only, the MMFLA, and they prefer. Maybe we should run this question by our attorney.
Well, the clue I take is where it says Provisioning Center. Provisioning Center is something, is a term is defined by the FM, I'm sorry, MMFLA. So I'm assuming, based upon that verbiage, that it was adopted there. That references the fact that we have three different statutes. You opted in, so to speak, under the second one, which allows for the Provisioning Centers. So this would be different than what we just acted on under the 2018 legislation.
Okay.
Who's the roll call?
What was the address on that?
Ninety-three fifty-nine North Door Highway.
It's on the south side of Black Olive Street. This is the one you asked me about earlier, Stan. It's the same one.
Are you ready?
I believe so.
Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Stan?
Excuse me, no.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Pre-zoning of three commercial buildings with the wrong zoning of RU2 Local Family to general commercial. Ninety-thirty Seon Street, ninety-sixty-six, and ninety-fifty-two North Seon. I can give you a little bit of background on this. When building permits were issued, the zoning should have been changed years ago. These are commercial businesses that are being taxed as commercial business. It will not change the tax status. It only changes the zoning because it is the commercial business. And it's high past yours.
Point of information, sir. If I may. May I be recognized as the point of information?
Yeah.
Thank you. I believe that there are other requirements for GC next to RU2 that are in the zoning ordinance that I would like to see. The Plan Commission never decided to enforce those. This is essentially non-conforming in that area. They're required to have green space buffer walls all around in any adjacent area next to RU, a high-density residential. I'd like to see the board, we get a lot of pushback from folks in that area that live there, that would like to see more green space buffering between these intensive uses and the intensive residential people that are there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may address what Theo said.
In this particular case, of this particular, these particular parcels of property, there really is not a lot of room between all these facilities and partial properties. And I think that's why the Plan Commission didn't bring it up, is because there just seems to be a limitation, you know, given the size and the dimensions and the locations of the property.
They are fenced off from the other RU2 units.
Right, and there's a fence, but as far as beautification or, you know, landscaping or...
So do you need a motion for that? And I'll make that if you have...
Yes, I need a motion and...
That's a four.
Mr. Chairman, will we have to make, I believe the, yeah, I believe the Plan Commission voted independently on all three. I just want to make that clear. I don't know whether we should or shouldn't.
That's Mr. Gilder. Mr. Gilder, will we be required to do these separately, or do we do three addresses as per session?
It's up to you. If there's a motion made for all three at once, then those can be petitioned out by motion. So you can do them individually or in both?
Okay, I choose to do them in both.
You're all approved, so as far as, yeah, my motion's fine.
Yep. And we will take a roll call over that also.
Okay, Stan?
Stan?
Stan, did you hear me?
I did get an opportunity to ask any questions, but one thing I want to know is whether, has anybody, I haven't had a chance to view the... And I find that disturbing that if I'm going to vote on this, I want to see what people are talking about, what it looks like. If it's a residential business to break out.
It's not, it's...
Were there any...
Three stores, or two stores and an old van. So they're all residential buildings.
Was there anybody...
No owners.
You said what?
There are no resident owners.
Was there anybody coming to the meeting that they didn't want to know?
No, they didn't show up at the planning. All three property owners agreed.
Because it wasn't properly posted either.
It doesn't change your tax status.
But they're not resident.
Business owners.
Hey, Stan?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Motion, yes.
Sky Labs LLC, ninety-four twenty-one North Door Highway, asking for a special land use for marijuana processing. Motion was passed through the planning board. And this will also include...
That's a four.
Medical marijuana? Can you see where it says?
It says processor.
Right.
Well, that fits into what he's talking about, but a processor would be under...
There's processors under both the 2008 and the previous. This, my understanding is, is under the previous ordinance, already adopted, but I may be wrong.
Okay, you make the motion to accept?
Accepted under the marijuana.
And do we have a second?
MMFLA.
MMFLA.
Okay, do you have a second? Mr. Chairman.
Did you say...
Eric?
Okay, I will bring to your attention that this is the facility, which, this is the facility that was already given the green light by LARAS to sell for recreational.
This was the address?
Yes.
No, it's adjacent.
Yeah.
It's adjacent, just to the north.
It's, no, it's the actual property.
It's not, no, it's a separate address, Eric.
Is it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's one thing I wanted to bring up. So going through the paperwork, when the forms were submitted, forms were submitted to the township on two different addresses. There's a ninety-four twenty-one and ninety-four twenty-three. So...
Is that referred, is that referred to the same building, Chad? Would you please?
Yes, if you agree with the...
Yes.
Ninety-four twenty-three is the Provisioning Center, and ninety-four twenty-one is the processing.
Got it?
Yeah.
Okay, and when we, can I just ask you a couple of questions, just for clarity for my board here? Okay. When we approved you for the permit, was that your, so essentially, you had it like surveyed, you divided, two separate properties?
Yeah, so there's one tax ID there, but there's a separate commercial property address, okay? So the commercial tax ID is ninety-four twenty-one, and that's the same building that resides there, but there's a separate, like a, the way consumers did, we went off the consumer's address, so ninety-four twenty-three is the Provisioning Center. It's the same piece of property.
Right.
So it doesn't allow me to use that property to get two separate licenses for both on the same property.
Right, right.
Okay. So there's a ninety-four twenty-three address, that's the Provisioning Center. Then there's ninety-four twenty-one, and that's the processing.
And they're both in here, doesn't it?
Yep, yep. Yep, they're, you know, it's the same building, it's just separated, it's like, you know, a separate...
But it has two separate addresses?
Yes, sir.
They're contiguous physically.
So they're connected, it's a connected building, not two separate houses?
No, no, it has two separate addresses for the purpose of the power, basically, the power electricity.
And that, if I may, Chip, you know, you already have a green light by the state to sell for rec, right? I mean, January first will be your...
That's correct, we've been issued a license.
Right, I thought you meant, so is this approval for the medical or the recreational? And in some ways, I kind of know that it doesn't matter because the exact...
Well, we're asking for today's approval for the medical. That's what I...
That's what you're asking for, this is for the medical?
Yes.
Under the MMFLA?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just want to be clear for the board because, you know, we've got some issues here, we've got, and I just want clarity for the board, okay? All right, thank you.
My motion will stay as long as it's for the MMFLA. Yes, so that'll have to be included in my motion.
Okay, that was seconded by Rachel.
Can't hear, can't hear.
Do we go there?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that this is in the motion.
On the motion.
So I'm part of it, I'm not fully correct.
Yeah, well, you can accept the processing, processor, in a fundamental way, if you want to, on the light of reason.
Okay. Okay, Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes. Stan?
No.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shelley?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed.
The G was scratched and corrected to the camera. We'll round the three commented comments to three minutes each.
Couldn't stand it, couldn't you?
Love those nine remarks.
Sorry.
Rich Russell, Thford Township, Lake Road. But that's good that you brought that up because I'm going to be speaking about some of the comments that have been made in the past to me and about me. I was, I, we thank people for being here at one particular meeting, and the statement was, "Thank you all for coming out tonight," everybody except for Rich Russell. Okay, bye. When I talked about parliamentary procedure and that, I was told that we do run our meetings by parliamentary procedure. Well, tonight you got an education from Cindy Hicks, when she showed you that the people in Township do have a right to speak up about the agenda and what you're speaking about. I think we only got to do that because the TV cameras were here at the time, but that's a moot point. At the last meeting, I was told that, by Gary, that he knows that I hate him. I'm sorry, but hatred is a very strong emotion, and I had to question myself about that. Do I have that strong of emotion about you? I'm sure there's several people in this township that would have that emotion towards you. Some of them have had relatives buried in the wrong funeral lots. Some of them have had relatives who slipped and fell out here, broke their hip, and were dead within a month and a half from pneumonia. There was one elderly woman that stood here at this podium complaining about the treatment she got in Gary's office, how he yelled at her and rushed her out because she was complaining about her husband's plot.
Personal attacks are not going to take place tonight.
You're getting, you're just getting too aggressive, Gary.
They're not going to take place.
Gary, put, get too aggressive. I'm just recapping the things that happened.
Eric, can you escort Mr. Russell out of here?
Well, Mr. Stevens, I'm going to repeat your statement about me.
No, twisting the words, Brett.
You think you know. I don't, I just pity you.
I didn't say pity.
Mr. Gilder?
Supervisor, I'm going to suggest that in lieu of anything further, your recess, let cooler heads prevail.
Are we going to recess, Gary? Are you going to be cool?
If you're cool, you can speak.
Okay, thank you.
Eugene Linsell, Lewis Road, Thford Township. I know we're backpedaling here with the recreation marijuana that should have been done six months ago. But I believe you guys are trying, so hopefully, we don't lose out on a lot of money while you guys are working on this. I do appreciate you guys working on it. I don't understand why today's meeting, we were supposed to have at four-thirty, got canceled. I was going to ask Gary afterwards, but I don't know if it's now a question or answer then. But I noticed a lot of people, I had to, I'm a little hard of hearing, I had to actually sit up in the front row today just to be able to try to hear you guys. Something you guys might want to think about is maybe a different mic system, maybe, you know, something that, like I use when I drive my semi truck, it's right here, you know, by my mouth. So, you know, when you guys are comfortable in your chairs and talking and stuff, that, you know, we can hear you a little bit better, maybe something. But I just don't understand why, and it's just not the marijuana stuff, it's other stuff that, it just seems like we're behind the eight ball on this. Other places have done it earlier on, you know? But I do know we're all human, and believe it or not, I do believe in your guys' hearts, even though I don't agree with you, that you guys feel you're doing the best for this township. But sometimes that scares me on how some of you guys are acting, kind of both sides of the fence here. I'm trying not to pick, you know, because this is something that I am going to run for in November for trustee. And to be honest with you, I'm hoping nobody talks to me how maybe I've talked to you guys in the past, and I do want to apologize for stuff. I actually had a very dear, I thought he was a friend, I grew up with his boys, I've known him for fifty-some years, called me an asshole because I don't agree with Gary. And I do believe maybe this person is misinformed on a little bit of stuff, and that's another thing I'd like to talk to you tonight about, Gary, if you have time for that. Thank you.
Just one other thing, my name's Dennis Page, I represent Liquor Baptist Church. You know, we think this revenue coming in from marijuana and liquor and all this is going to help our schools, help our roads, but look at Rome. Our schools are in worse shape now than they ever had been. The lottery, the money's been going to lottery since, what, early seventies? And they say, oh, yeah, you know, we put billions of dollars into our schools from the lottery. Look at our schools, look at our roads. I'm not going to repeat what our governor says about our roads because, you know, I'm not going to use that language, but look at our roads. And yet, we want to, we think the revenue's going to help. At fifteen hundred dollars from Evra on one day, maybe once, only one day, people were standing in line. What about day two? What about day three? What about day four? You know, maybe day one was fifteen hundred. Maybe the revenue from the lottery is supposed to help, but hey, we're in a tumbling society, but that's it.
Thank you.
Howdy, Ed Philpansik, Clough, Michigan. I'll agree, it's very hard to hear you guys sometimes. Yeah. Anyways, a couple of thoughts we have concerning these marijuana issues. The first thing I guess I'd like to say, and I've sure heard this many times before, but I personally heal many people. They're healed. People right here from the township with very serious diseases such as stage four cancer. I can take marijuana oil that I make myself in my home from cannabis that I farm myself and give that oil to people, and it absolutely chews them. Sometimes from diagnoses of death, where a doctor will give them months to live, and years later, they're still alive. So that's a real thing, that absolutely happens. As far as the money aspect in our township coffers, I suppose, one thing that's certainly a fact is we absolutely allow the sale of alcohol in our community. It has several different locations, and alcohol is a drug that has many dangers, both physically and socially. Many people are harmed, all types of abuses happen within families. And so if we're going to vote on this from a moral standpoint, maybe we should look at some of the other things that we're allowing to happen that are maybe more dangerous, certainly, than cannabis. Also, concerning our coffers, again, I guess if we're going to look at it from just a commercial standpoint, maybe we should just eliminate the cannabis aspect, and maybe hear some arguments concerning Wal-Mart or Menards. Those would certainly provide extreme revenue streams without the moral aspects to argue. And in connection to that, I think that that provides a commercial atmosphere that many people here in this community aren't comfortable with. So the provisioning centers that we have now, I think a lot of farmers and regular people here from the community that certainly have helped to create this marijuana market that we're involved in. We operated basically a free market under the 2008 Act that was unregulated for a substantial amount of time, and that market worked. And certainly, many of us made enormous contributions to the science and to the financial aspects now that some of these bigger businesses are capitalizing on. Why I don't care for the bigger businesses, certainly, they're going to come in, and they have more money and perhaps maybe more influence at that rate. But the small guy in Thford, I think, is what we need to be concerned with, and the fact that many of us are farmers, and many of the farmers here in this community are in seriously, serious peril. They're not earning very much money, the dairy farmers and the corn farmers and bean farmers in particular are having a very difficult time. Those are certainly not lucrative crops by any means anymore. And this legal crop, regardless of what your moral standpoint or if you agree with the science behind the cannabis, these farmers deserve to be able to have the right to be able to farm that crop that's absolutely legal and to earn income for their families, independent from the consideration of these large corporate enterprises. And so I don't see any reason why we can't maybe consider an ordinance that disallows the large commercial enterprises and still allows the average farmer here in Thford Township to earn an income for themselves and to maybe make their farm liquid again, and have a future for the progeny, the children and the grandchildren. And I guess lastly, I'm going to go ahead and point out that many people are of the opinion that, there certainly was a November first deadline, there already have been some opinions made in some legal circles that the MRTMA applications that are in before ordinances are drafted will be considered, and those decisions will be made by the state. And so I think there are already some people in the township that have done that, those applications are in, and so that's probably going to be a concern later on down the road, too, is that the state indeed does grant some of these applications in lieu of the ordinance you just approved, probably it's going to be a lawsuit. And I guess one more thing, I guess I'm going to say. Hemp, in most respects, looks and smells identical to cannabis. I and others, without a doubt, are going to make very large pushes to farm hemp in the Thford community, and there is nothing anybody can do about it. It's a federal law and federal licensing that we will take advantage of, and so the people that are opposed to this based on the smell, maybe, or the visual aspect, or certain things of that, are certainly going to be overwhelmed by the federal aspect of the hemp farming. And one more thing, if I may, please.
I think you went on about six...
Yeah, okay, I appreciate you, thanks for your time, guys.
Greg?
Kevin? Okay, Governor Lawrence Hurd Road, I just want to make a comment on the ordinance that we passed tonight to completely opt out, while you're still in session, maybe to just consider adding an amendment to it that, with the exception of medical provisioning centers already licensed under the MMFLA for the township license, that they would be allowed to apply and begin selling under a state license. And that allows the businesses that are already vetted in the township, in business for medical, to apply if they get approved by the state... If they get approved by the state, they can start selling the recreational, because you know they're, you know, they're already trustworthy, they're licensed by the township and the state, and that removes some conflicts of people that have applied for a license, got a license, and now you're gonna tell them no recreational. It's just something to consider, you're still in session, you can still add an amendment to that ordinance if you so desire. Just a thought.
Dixie Smith Sagnot wrote. Dixie Smith Sagnot wrote what he said.
Greg? No?
I'm on to board member comments. Eric?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I'd also like to thank Attorney Gilner and Chris, my thanks. I think that when Chris is here, when you're here, I think we have progress. I don't think it makes a difference whether either way we were here. You know, I just appreciate having you here to ask questions and bounce stuff off of, and I think that your advice is almost always sound, so very thank you. With that said, I just think that tonight's opt-in was the wrong deci- or opt-out, excuse me, was the wrong decision. And I'd base that on a couple of things. Number one, a few things. Number one, it's certainly driving an unfair advantage. And, and what, what we're doing is we're, by, by our, by fuddling on this, we're inadvertently granting differential advantage to one business to have extreme differential advantage over another. With that said, and having and allowing one, you know, license fee to go through and while blocking the rest, I would, I would, I would think that that's gonna create a lawsuit. And I think that's gonna create a lawsuit, because I think that the money involved in it and the loss of revenue will be, will, will prompt that. So I kind of think, I have a feeling that we're gonna be right back here in some idle Thursday night on a snowstorm, breaking federal law again. Like we did last time. The, with, in addition to that, I think it's also, it's also a balance to point out that there's a loss of revenue that's just being tossed to the wayside. Generally, you're made a point that that revenue stream may decline, and that's very true, and I kind of, I kind of anticipate that to decline after the rush, initial rush. But it, nonetheless, it will be a steady stream of revenue for this township. It will, no doubt, help benefit our roads and schools and help the township conduct other matters as well as higher judicial, police, if we so choose. In addition, I also want to point out that, you know, we, we should have been more proactive on this. Like I said before, I had every, I had every impression that we would move forward with an opt-in. I felt that's what the township wanted, I thought that was what the whole red carpet dream was for. The, on the other hand, I think that it's too premature in the stages to, to say that there's, there's no liability with that. I think there will, will be an issue in the future. Other than that, I, I want the residents and the, and the business owners to understand, and mostly really I want the residents to understand, that a lot of these workshops often become either stale or we spend a lot of time discussing things that don't really seem to develop into progress. And it's a two-part reason. Number one is because the business owners, you know, don't understand where the residents are coming from when they talk about other individuals living next door to them, which, again, is something that we've got to repeat constantly, that's something that we can't regulate. And then furthermore, you know, the, the business owners just want to get down to the brass tacks of the discussion of business. So I always see this, I've always seen that there's a conflict between, I don't think, I don't think that we have, I, I, I think that the res... I just would like the residents to know that I don't think the sky's gonna fall, I don't think that, I, I don't think you have anything to worry about, just because, you know, someone opens a provisioning center in this community or a facility, it's not an issue. We, we, the planning commission has not denied anybody regardless of, you know, all the parameters and restrictions that you've all mentioned. So with that said, I, I think a lot of these things were just moot points, and we just kind of wasted our time doing a lot of talking. But with that said, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and have a good night.
Excellent, Eric. Stan?
I'm good. See you guys later.
John?
Well, I just got, I'm just gonna be brief, a lot of brief. But anyways, I think the planning commission does a great job, I think they do, they do their homework, and I appreciate the work they do. And as far as Mr. Gilner, I, I like it when he's here, too. If I want to run things by him, I can. And he's, you're gonna get us some steps to get that done, so there's no reason why that whole process couldn't be expedited just based on what we get through. You know, so it's, for me, it's the only way to go. That, that way we can get through this, work it out where there's an medium in between for all of us. So that was kind of brief.
Thank you, John.
Rachel?
Talking about recreational marijuana, I do think we should amend the ordinance that we passed to opt out, permitting currently medically licensed facilities in our township to be able to have the opportunity to apply for their state license. I think that would only be fair considering the fact that we do have one already has been approved by the state of Michigan. So I do think we're opening the door up there, so I agree with you on that. I, there's a lot of frustrations I've had lately, and I know we're working through a lot of things, and it, it looks like it was getting better. Still some things I wanted to look at. I was a little surprised that the bills didn't have a little more questions. I mean, I rarely get time to sit down and look at them, but I looked at them, I seen a few different things, but it seems like we just passed them tonight, and I did have questions and concerns and asked for things. I just, I don't know. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Greg. But I think we're, we're moving along, and I just hope that things get better. I hope that we keep our policies and our procedures and our handbooks. I, I hope everyone's read it, 'cause sometimes I kind of wonder if we're all on the same page, so. Anyway, everybody have a good night tonight.
Thank you, Rachel.
Um, I don't want, I don't have a lot to say. I, everybody has a super good holiday, and I appreciate everybody coming out, I like having the attorney here as well. I think that's about it.
Thank you, Nicole. This attorney being here helps enormously. I don't know how I can put up with a storm that goes on here, 'cause often, sometimes I'd like to not be here myself. And I know the clerk that was elected has taken a tremendous beating day after day, and when she leaves this township, because of what's going on for the residents, the board members, and the media, they're gonna think twice about the next person appearing here. She's getting beat worse than I am, and all this is not necessary. It happens week after week, month after month. Sit back there and smile. You're not even a resident here, and you created it, too.
Are you mad at me?
No.
Who are you talking to? She should do her job.
She just sat there and smiled, smiled.
Hey, don't put some comments, Gary. Just, that was your rule a minute ago, wasn't it, now to Rich Russell?
I'll make the motion that we adjourn, everyone has a good Christmas.
That's a good motion, and he's wrong for saying that about hate, but you should hate yourself.
Thank you, thank you.
She should do her job.
See you in court.